Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular July meeting of the Concord Zoning Board of Adjustment. We will follow our usual procedure this evening, which is to say we will call the cases in the order in which they appear in the agenda. Tonight, there are only two. We will ask the appellant to come forward, be sworn in, be seated in the chairs over here to my right, and offer any testimony that they would like us to hear. We ask that they confine their testimony, if at all possible, to a 10-minute interval. Following that, we will check in to see if there is anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard in favor or in opposition to the appeal, and we ask that they confine themselves to a five-minute interval. Following that, we will check in with code enforcement to see if there are any comments from their office, and after that, if there has been any testimony that has been offered that appears to bear factual clarification, the appellant will have the opportunity to offer that clarification, not new arguments, prior to our closing public testimony portion of the hearing. Under most circumstances, the board will act on each case before moving on to the next. The first case this evening is case 4.1 on the agenda is 0292. Eric Skinner, on behalf of Walmart Real Estate Business Trust, requests approval for a variance from Section 28-24K B7 Table of Accessory Uses, accessory to a principal non-residential use to allow outside storage of materials and inventory where such outside storage is not otherwise allowed, at Tax Map Lot 46Z56, addressed as 344 Loudon Road in the Gateway Performance District. Not a development of regional interest. Swear to tell the whole truth?
I swear to tell the whole truth.
And nothing but. Very well. Would you identify yourself with the record, please?
Eric Skinner?
Have a seat and fill us in on why you feel the variance is appropriate.
No, we're not related. Although, I'm doing the genealogy later. No, thank you guys for all hearing.
Can you get closer to our microphone?
Thank you guys all for hearing me tonight. We, one of our clients is Walmart Supercenter. One of them is in Concord here. As you guys well know, we're a snow contractor for the Walmart Corporation, and what we're seeking is to retain a salt enclosure in the storage areas, you see represented up top here, to kind of legally and properly get acceptance of something that's really been done by others for many, many years, not just on this site, but also at Harbor Freight, Dick's, and basically throughout this district. The reasoning that we're asking for this, the variance, from the level of service that these parking lots and square footages that they consume really requires us to have onsite materials to keep the safety of the customers and the people around through it. So I think it's, you'll see that's pretty commonplace in many towns and many different areas where you have these large parking lot areas. So in the notes, we went through all the five criteria. I don't want to take up more time than you'd like me to, but...
Go ahead and touch on the five criteria.
Okay. I may add actually some direction on that, but I'll kind of make the case and then answer questions as needed. So one of the main things that we were looking for here is that outside storage of the salt bin. We did construct the one in there. We didn't actually realize at first when we did that that we needed this variance. We were contacted by Anne Marie and her staff. We tried to comply as best we could, getting a temporary permit to make sure for this winter that we were covered legally for you guys, and then now we're coming to you guys for a little bit more permanence and consistency for how we'd like to service the site. So within the Gateway District, you know, it's currently located in the upper overflow parking lot of their section where they really don't use very much. It's really for just that overflow. It's the safest place for us to keep that, is where we're doing loading of materials, salts, things of that nature. We have loaders or trucks and equipment that we really want to keep away from the general public. That's why that location is ideal for us. It keeps us away from parking lots, shopping carts, kids, you know, everybody that's active in that area. So that's why we feel it's the most ideal area to be in. There's very little pedestrian traffic up there. There's actually very little parking up there as well. What we've found in communication with Walmart and the general manager, Jessica, over there as well, is that in being, having presence in that area actually helps to mitigate a little bit of the unwanted use of that area, where you may have some stagnant vehicles or a camper, you know, where you get people that just kind of need to move on. Our activity there has kind of made that unwanted from that standpoint, so we found that the store has kind of improved things on that matter. One of the other main points that Walmart did want me to present to you all is there is a main cut-through that is owned by the Walmart Corporation, is not a public road, but is frequently, very frequently used between Loudon Road and Sheep Davis Road, that access road where the set of lights are between Harbor Freight right next to Walmart. I don't think there's actually a name to the road that I can find, but we do maintain that as part of the Walmart property. That is used by the public, not Walmart shoppers, employees, quite frequently. So again, it is another piece of why we do need to make sure that our service is tip-top. We have product available to make sure we're keeping people safe in this increasingly litigious world we live in. But I think that's the mainstay, without being too wordy. I'm happy to answer questions or things like that, so.
The staff made a suggestion for an alternate location. Are you aware of that?
I am.
Could you tell us your thoughts about that?
In speaking with Jessica, the general manager, again, from Walmart, she said that ideally it's really not a good place. Again, one of the main things that we're going for here is safety. So, I mean, the overarching theme of our service is we're trying to provide safety in the wintertime for people. You know, our state plows are now doing the same thing. We're trying to do that in a safe manner by putting all of the material in that, the side entrance where Anne Marie and staff has suggested. We put ourselves a lot closer to sharper shoppers, the to-go area, but also moving cars. We have a lot of delivery trucks that come down through that area. That's their main travel way, and an effort to keep them away from the store there on the outside of that parking lot, which keeps their traveling that side again from a safety basis. So the preference from Walmart is to stay out of that area as much as possible because of the to-go, especially that to-go area is very active.
That is an active section of the parking lot.
Super, super active. So, out of an overabundance of caution, that's why we're really requesting to be kind of out and away. The unfortunate part is that's, you know, right in the front of their frontage, which is usually not where we want to see outdoor storage materials. If I can speak to that just for a moment, what we do is we've taken our salt storage area, we've gone above and beyond state best practice, both from state and New Hampshire, but also from SEMA, which is the Snow and Ice Management Association, which we're members of, to make sure that we're environmentally covering every base and going above and beyond those criteria as well. So, and we like to keep it clean. You don't see, you know, a shanty town over there, as you see in some other areas. It's clean, it's professional, it's safe.
Questions on the board?
I have two. You describe it as temporary in your application, but is it a permanent thing?
We're hoping for a variance to be able to keep it there.
Permanent, okay.
It is, you know, building it to best practice is not just throwing up some wood, and it's a to-do to put it there.
Okay. And then my other question, as it always is with these variants, is you're looking for a variance to allow a use that's not permitted in the district, outdoor storage. So what are the special conditions of the property that, just the use variance?
If I understand you correctly, I think the, I think from a safety, or why would we need the storage compared to why would we not be able to put it somewhere else?
No, not where you're putting it, but the use, outdoor storage is allowed in the district. So why should we, what's special about the property, it's not the applicant, but the property that justifies it.
Thank you for the clarification. I think what's special about this is just the volume of the area that we're having to handle, and again, in many of these larger facilities, Amazon facilities, and these larger facilities, in order to, in order to service them correctly and safely and responsibly, you'll see a lot of material, equipment, trucks, things like that are left onsite because that response time needs to be faster than even the state plows are out at. So that's number one. Then number two, the storage of those materials, it is important, and again, to have those available, should we have a flash freeze, or as we all know, weather is increasingly more challenging, we get the rain in between the snow. We need to, in a moment, be able to make that safe. Furthermore, we're not only talking about just the Walmart parking lot, we're talking about, not a public road, but a road that's used by the public very, very frequently.
I think it's a road that's assumed to be public. I thought it was.
Yep. And Walmart maintains it, does the potholes, does the entire maintenance for that, and, you know, we are, trust me, we are very aware of how important that is to them.
Thank you.
You've also got that gully in the back section, too. If you were trying to put it back there where the to-go, there's that big, is that a gully? Is that the right word?
Yeah, the parking lot is fairly flat over there.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of space in there. Really safety concern.
Yeah.
Again, the premise of what we're trying to do is keep this safe, keep away. We have these big loaders and all that. I can't, like, I don't even want to think about a sharpen cart or something of that nature. So it's, the main theme is safety.
Other questions? Did you say you're storing vehicles there as well?
Typically, we'll store a front-end loader, or a skid steer, a bobcat, as you might call it. So we store our supplies there and then plowing equipment to be able to do that.
They're not in the bin that you're discarding, though?
No, typically, we do that. We park that within the area, within that.
And so...
And that would, I'm sorry, just to clarify, that would only be, you know, we're not, we don't store, you know, 16 trucks there all year and all that. It's what's being serviced at that.
And do you have salt delivered, or does it come once a year, once a week, or?
As needed, yep. We have it salted. Salt is delivered, you know, same as the state sheds directly there, and then it's immediately put into the bin, and it's all covered over and better than state standard.
And you described as outdoor storage, but it sounds like it might be a structure?
It's a temporary structure. It's made by what we call bin block, kind of like a concrete block, and then a coverall. I don't know if that makes sense.
So it's a pile of salt with a cover on it, but Jersey barriers around it?
Yeah.
Is it there now?
It is. We'd like to keep it there.
Is it salt in it?
I think there's a minimal amount of salt in it, yes.
Other questions? Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
Just any other questions, I'm happy to answer. Otherwise, I'm cognizant of your time.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Do you want to step down?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you all.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this appeal? The record will show that there was no one who wished to speak. Any comment from code enforcement?
I don't have any comment.
In that case, we will close the public testimony portion of the hearing, and we will move on to deliberations. Brenda, what do you think?
I don't see a problem with it. I mean, yeah, the preference would be to probably put it to the back or side of the building, but knowing the land back there, I can understand why it'd be a safety concern, and it'd be difficult, honestly, I think, to get in and out with bigger trucks back there. They have a very specific way they have to get, like, deliveries put through, so I don't have a problem with moving it.
Um, I've gotten there. It's not going to alter the essential character, it's not going to diminish surrounding property values, and I think the explanation of hardship is good enough.
Jim?
Would you say it's good enough?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I can see.
For government work.
I can see from a safety perspective that you don't want deliveries of salt or equipment around people, but they probably should have just been considered in the original design of the facility, so. But I do think it's important that we kind of make the observation that there's a uniqueness to this, because there is a quasi-public road that increases the traffic.
Yes.
It's more sizable than most parking lots, and as we said, the customer safety issues. So I think that this isn't a cookie cutter for every parking lot in the city, but it's unique enough that we can get to yes.
I agree with my colleagues, and I have no additional comments.
I also agree with my colleagues and have nothing to add. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I can. I moved to grant the variance from Section 28-2-4KB7 Table of Accessory Uses, accessory to a principal non-residential use to allow outside storage of materials and inventory where such outside storage is not otherwise allowed in the Gateway Performance District. 344 Loudon Road, because of all the criteria under RSA 67433, have been met based on the records before us, and to adopt the applicant's proposed findings are the board findings of fact.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. The discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I say aye as well. The vote is unanimous, the variance is granted. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Did you mean for any further?
No? You're all set.
Did you make a thank you?
Okay, I've lost the agenda. It's gone completely from my line.
Tell you're having fun with the new system, Chris.
Oh, yeah. You know, it's just great. Do you suppose Gutenberg had these problems? I don't know.
They gave us all iPads.
Well, that's awesome.
I printed my stuff out.
It's not awesome. Okay, thank you. I think I should do that myself.
I'm sure Mark likes it. He brings his computer every time anyway.
I know. Me, too.
Having proved myself to be an unutterable Luddite, I will now move on to case 4.2, which is case 0293 Hebert and Dolder, PLLC. On behalf of Brinley J. Goudreau Revocable Trust, requests approval for a variance from Article 28, or Article, from Section 28-41E Maximum Lot Coverage H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to allow maximum lot coverage of 15% rather than the 10% required maximum for the construction of a garage addition at Tax Map Lot 51Z12, addressed as 50 Lakeview Drive in the Open Space Residential RO District. This is not a development of regional impact. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes.
Would you identify yourselves for the record, please, as you testify?
For the record, my name's Maria Dolder. I'm the attorney on the project, and I'll just have my client identify himself for the record now.
And my name is Bradley Goudreau. I'm the resident.
What would you like us to know?
And just so that you don't feel too bad, I'm glad that Anne Marie put up the plan, because I was afraid I was going to have to play with your computer as well, so. As you indicated, this property is located at 50 Lakeview Drive. It's in your RO residential district, and it contains 5.94 acres of land. As you can see, with, this is the overview of the property, the majority of that is still undisturbed wetlands, sorry, woodlands. It's a large parcel for this area of the town. It currently houses a single-family residence, a garage/pool house, and a swimming pool. And all of those items were constructed pursuant to building permits obtained from the City of Concord. Right now, the applicant is proposing to construct a 32 by 32 addition onto the existing garage/pool house, and I'm just going to refer to it as a garage as we go forward, but it's a combination of the two. Even though the applicant did construct the garage that exists today in 2019, he's run out of space in it. He would like to have additional space to store some of his personal equipment. He does actually own an excavator, a skid steer, he has a motorcycle, lawnmower, you know, all the normal things that go along with a residence. The interesting part about this particular proposal is he's already ripped up a portion of impervious that existed on this property where this addition is going to go. So even though we are asking for it to be like 1,900, give or take, square feet, he has actually ripped up 1,000 square feet of impervious. So our argument is that obviously we're going to net about 964 square feet of additional lot coverage. I mean, that's basically the issue here. As you can see on this particular picture, it's the driveway. I mean, the fact of the matter is that driveway exceeds your lot coverage in and of itself. So nothing, yeah. It does. Anything else on that lot exceeds your lot coverage currently. However, all of those were permitted by the City of Concord. He did obtain building permit for the house. He obtained a driveway permit for the driveway. He obtained building permits for the pool house, the garage, and for the pool. So he was...
No variances?
No. No. So I think what happened is, I don't think anybody was aware that it was only a 10% lot coverage in this particular district, and with the buildings being so, well, minimal on the lot, obviously, all of those were granted. So what ended up happening was he went back to the city to appeal a building permit for this addition, and at that point in time, they said, oh, wait a minute, I think we exceed the lot coverage, so you need to go get a variance. So that's where we are now. I would like to say that, you know, this, the use of the property is residential. It's clearly permitted in this ordinance, and it really is only impacted by the fact that this lot is in your RO zoning district. Every other residential zoning district that you have permit lot coverages of 20% to 60% in much smaller lots. This is the only district where your lot coverage is 10%, which quite frankly, is quite small. So basically, when we put that into square footage, he is permitted to have 25,874.64 square feet of lot coverage. His structures only occupy 5,046. Like I said, I think the driveway is like 28 in and of itself. And just to give you an idea of the driveway, because I think that you can see that there is other, you know, impervious on the area. So there is a shared driveway that existed on this property. At one point in time, his neighbor that was sharing that driveway indicated they wanted to relocate it, and they were going to tear it up and no longer have a shared driveway. And so in, when that was discussed, my client applied to put his own driveway on the property, which is kind of why we were in this position. The uniqueness of the land, the steepness of it, just the placement of the existing structures has made it so that this driveway has to be so long. And one of the things that we did discuss is that clearly he could tear up the impervious that belongs to that shared driveway. However, there is a pretty good reason as to why he doesn't want to do that. So the fire department had come out to his property at some point in time, and they were looking at the very long driveway. And even though we do believe that they could get up it, they indicated to him that they really want the other driveway to remain because they want to use that in the case of an emergency. So he doesn't want to tear that up in order to get the impervious back in order to do this by right and not need the variance. So we would like to keep that for fire safety purposes, but just so the board understands why we are where we are at this point in time. One other thing that I do just want to point out, which I think is important for the board to understand, is that your zoning ordinance defines... ordinance defines lot coverage two different ways in it. So, you have a glossary where you have definition section that defines lot coverage, and your lot coverage definition is area of the lot covered by the aggregate of the minimum horizontal cross-section area of all buildings on a lot, exclusive of cornices, eaves, gutters, blah, blah, blah. That is the definition. So, when I first sat down with him, I looked in your glossary, and I said, I don't know why you're coming to me, you don't need a variance, because lot coverage clearly is only your buildings, and you don't exceed it. However, when you go to Section 28-4-1E of your zoning ordinance, it has a different definition for lot coverage, and that definition rolls in impervious surfaces. That's what has caused us to be before this board tonight. And so, what we're asking is, the lot coverage there is ten percent, we're asking not to exceed fifteen percent. I think that we'll probably roll out about fourteen point five percent, but just to be on the safe side, we're asking that it be no greater than fifteen percent, in order to allow him to put this garage addition on the lot. And before I go into the five criteria, do you have any, like, initial questions?
Any questions?
Is there a grade to, uh, the property?
Is it what?
Is it a flat piece of property, or does the driveway run up a hill, or?
Oh, yeah, well, it swerves, right?
Yeah, the driveway runs up the hill until it gets on the top of where the, where the house is and the pool, and that's got a very minimal pitch to it at that point.
You can't even see the house, probably, or the garage, or the buildings from the road?
You cannot, no, just the roofs.
Yeah, and there, the buildings are approximately three hundred feet away from the neighbors, and as you can see, all of the properties on both sides, there are only two neighbors to this, because the City of Concord owns all the other abutting land as conservation land. So, their two abutters are at least three hundred feet away in terms of buildings, and since they each have wooded areas on them, they can barely see each other. In fact, I think when fire went up there to check things out, they indicated to the applicant that they didn't even know he was up there, right, because it, it's pretty remote out there at this point in time. So, in terms of the criteria, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. As this board knows, in order to be contrary to your public interest, the variance has to unduly and in marked degree conflict with the ordinance, such that it violates your ordinance's basic zoning objectives, and to determine whether or not that is the case, we look at whether or not the proposal before you would actually alter the essential characteristics of the neighborhood, or would threaten public health, safety, or welfare. Obviously, we believe that the applicant's variance does neither of those. Ultimate use is permitted by right under your zoning ordinance, it's not going to change the overall use and look of this particular property. Truly is the fact that your zoning ordinance defines lot coverages in two different ways within the same ordinance, that this variance relief is needed at all, because it truly is the impervious, not the buildings on this site, that trigger the additional lot coverage. And quite frankly, if that driveway didn't have to be that long and go up to the house at that point in time, we would certainly be well under the ten percent that's permitted on this particular lot. So, we do not believe that this would create any safety hazards. Like I said, it's a pretty remote area of the city, and most people don't even know it exists. One of the other things that we looked at is just the stormwater, and all of that has been addressed on-site with the other buildings and with the driveways, so he had to address that at that point in time. He has also indicated that even with all that rain that we were getting, he was not having any runoff, no puddling, he was not experiencing anything from that. So, there's no reason to believe that replacing the impervious that was already there with this structure would cause any other related issues. In terms of two, the variance granted, being spirit of the ordinance, once again, this is permitted by right in your zoning district. The current lot size requirements in the zoning district are only two acres, so he greatly exceeds that, he has 5.94 acres. He meets all of his setbacks, um, and it's really, truly, the fact that the RO zoning district has such a small lot coverage that this even is before this board today. So, we do not believe that this conflicts so, um, distinctly with your zoning ordinance that, um, it's not within the spirit of what was intended. In terms of doing substantial justice, once again, as this board knows, that when we look at substantial justice, we look at any loss to the individual, that's not outweighed by the gain to the general public, is considered an injustice. In this particular case, we don't see any gain to the general public by not allowing him to store his equipment and his materials and, um, vehicles on his property within a building, when he has 5.94 acres, and nobody's going to be impacted by that. This is a residential use, it clearly fits within that, so we do not believe that there would be any, um, public justification as to why to deny this, therefore, this is substantial justice. In terms of the value of surrounding properties, once again, the surrounding properties can't actually see this particular site, and even if they could, it is residential in nature, and it will continue that. Um, like I said, the existing, uh, structures are over three hundred feet away from the abutters that live there. Since this addition is going to be attached to the existing garage, um, it will continue to meet all of your setback requirements. There really will not be any impact in terms of value to any of the surrounding, uh, properties, and like I said, other than the two neighbors, the rest of the surrounding properties are conservation lands, so clearly this would fit into that. In terms of unnecessary hardship, and the uniqueness of this particular lot, um, this is one of those situations where it does have a natural topography to it, and the house and the structures were built, obviously, on the top of it, in the flat area, when he realized that he needed to obtain his own driveway, because his neighbor had indicated they might want to get rid of the shared driveway, he had no choice but to build the driveway in the location where it is. The structures were already there. This unfortunately is an interesting lot, and it's such a long driveway, it's like seven hundred feet, um, to get up to the house. So, that has led to the creation of the fact that we can't meet the lot coverage because of the impervious. Um, I also just want to add, one of the other unique parts of it is, from our perspective, is that this area was already impervious, um, you know, because, once again, he did not realize that impervious wasn't a lot coverage, and didn't realize that it was only a ten percent lot coverage. So, he will be removing a thousand square feet of impervious in order to build this, which really does net us only nine hundred and twenty-four square feet of additional lot coverage, from what you see out there. Given that this is such a large lot, it, like I said, exceeds your acreage requirements by such a large amount, that the distance from the structures, from your abutters, from the roadway, this addition certainly won't overburden this particular site, which is really the purpose of density and, and lot coverage, is to make sure that a property isn't overburdened by the use. This is going to continue to be residential, and this addition certainly won't overburden it. There aren't going to be any other, like, trees that need to be cut down in order to do this, it's not going to encroach on any of your setbacks, and it will be constructed onto an existing garage right there. So, we don't believe that there is any fair or substantial relationship to, um, this particular restrictions on this property, and the general purposes of your zoning ordinance, and clearly, we do believe it's reasonable, because it's residential, and it's not unreasonable to ask for a further garage. Like I said, in any other district, this would be permitted by right, because this is the lowest, um, lot coverage that is required on any site in the city, and, um, the fact of the matter is, the structures themselves really only make up a small part of this lot. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, but we are requesting that you grant the variance.
Questions from the board?
What's the lot coverage today without the addition?
Without the addition?
It exceeds ten percent already.
Oh, absolutely. The, so, the ten percent is, would allow 25,874.64, the driveway is 28,000 something else, and the, I think that it's 5,000 for just the structures, and then the other impervious.
The new structure is going to be seven hundred square feet?
The new structure is 1924, but he's ripping up a thousand of impervious...
Okay.
...to put that structure in its place. So, it's technically 1924, but we're removing a thousand of it. It's already been removed prior to doing this. So, our net is 924, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The record will show that there was no one present to speak in favor or in opposition. Any comments from code enforcement?
I would simply emphasize or add that when this property was split, there is a condition on the recorded plat that actually prohibits him from using the shared driveway. So, he had to put in the new driveway, and fire wants him to keep the existing driveway.
How do we wind up in two different definitions of coverage? Is that, did we just stumble over our own bootlaces at some point, or?
I wouldn't say we.
Well...
The planning board.
We didn't write it.
I, I must have been on some committee or other that was involved.
You'd have to ask whoever wrote the zoning ordinance.
In other words, it's, it's something that needs to be sorted out.
The current zoning ordinance, I won't say what needs to be done with it.
Do you know that?
Goodness.
It has so many problems, I, I could spend the next four hours going through them.
All right, any case, it's...
Do you know if that, um, inconsistency is sent, is only in the RO district, or is it everywhere?
It's everywhere.
Okay.
So, it's an anomaly.
Good to know.
Very good. With that, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing, and I will move over to Mr. Walder. How do you view this, sir?
I mean, there, there's so many grounds for, for an argument for hardship, I, I wouldn't know where to begin. Um, I think the anomaly with, with the driveway is one, I think the fact that they can't, uh, tear up part of the driveway to be in more conformity is another, I think the size of the lot versus lot coverage, um, is another hardship. It certainly beats the rest of the criteria in my mind, as far as doing substantial justice, uh, in terms of, uh, lowering the value of the neighborhood.
Mr. Mahan?
Yeah, I think this is one of the more unique pieces of property and situations that we've had all night, or, or in some time.
Yeah, this is a tough one tonight.
I think it's going to be hard to argue with that.
And it's why the zoning board of judgment exists.
There you go. Inspector Morgan?
I agree.
Ms. Perkins?
I agree.
I agree as well. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I move to grant the variance from Section 28-4-1C, Maximum Lot Coverage H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to allow minimum lot coverage of fifteen percent, maximum lot coverage of fifteen percent rather than the ten percent required maximum for the construction of a garage addition, uh, not otherwise allowed in the Open Space RO District at 50 Lakeview Drive, because all the criteria under RSA 67433 have been met based on the record before us, and to adopt the applicant's proposed findings as the board's findings of fact.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous, the variance is granted, which...
Thank you very much.
You're, you're welcome.
Nice to see you.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Which brings us to the minutes from June 4th. Did, I believe you all received a, a recommended, or a request to change on my part. Is, is that acceptable to everyone?
I wasn't here, so I'm going to...
Yeah, I wasn't here either. I'll move the minutes with Chairman Carley's edits.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? That takes care of that. Do we have any other business?
We do.
All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're done.